Okay, so let's call a roll and get things to order. Mike Favor, you're here. Kendra?
Here.
Regina?
I'm not here.
Okay, um, well metaphysically, George.
What am I doing with the minutes on that?
I, I am also here, so Frank is here, so all of us are here. Um, at least theoretically.
Yeah.
So, um, our first thing is to approve the meeting minutes of July the 22nd. Has everybody had a chance to look at them?
Yes.
You guys?
We weren't here.
No, we weren't here. So Kendra, you had a chance to look at them, you want to postpone?
Postpone.
Okay, great. Now, so we'll table the minutes. Um, McGovern Boulevard Extension has requested a continuance until, um, when do they want to continue to our next meeting?
September 9th.
September 9th, okay. Um, so I look for a motion.
So.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Um, Favor, Mike?
Yes.
Kendra?
Yes.
Regina?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Frank, yes, five oh to continue. Um, I'm gonna take you slightly out of order because we got another continuance and then they're both done. Um, so 357 Sterling Road wants to continue until Thanksgiving?
I'm not gonna be here on Thanksgiving.
No, we do.
So, the way this is. Well, it's going until the 9th, but I think we really, maybe at the next meeting, how can I, uh, next meeting, just, I, I mean, I'll call up in the meantime, so just gotta let us know if you want to rather, because, you know, according to our management rules, public hearings without actual hearings should not be long past like 90 days or something, you know, so I think we can discuss maybe at the next meeting or in between of the, asking, he's telling me his, message from this one, so I will have by midweek, and he said that himself, so respect for his word, he's gonna have something by midweek in terms of his responses to everything that's been, just comments so far. By midweek, we'll have more like, um, agenda for that.
Okay, that'll, that'll make sense. Um, so again, uh, motion to continue?
So will.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Regina?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Kendra?
Yep.
Mike?
Yes.
Frank, yes, five oh to continue. Okay, so let us reopen the continuance of the White Pond Road Flexible Development hearing. So, it, it seems to me that a lot of this part of the hearing is really focused on the open space and the suitability of the open space. Um, so, and, you know, we've all looked at the, the con, you know, Brad's comments and, and yours. Um, so I guess my primary concern that I would like to see addressed is that, um, you, there, there are two things that, um, we ought to discuss. First is that, um, you say this is a significant visual amenity. We're gonna need to see some evidence of that, photographs, something, you know, rather than just like, hey, this looks good on a map. I mean, if it's a visual amenity.
Okay, I, I. That was my bad, that was my bad.
See, if it's not a visual amenity, you're gonna get vicious feedback. So, no, yeah, so you need to focus on that. Um, I also don't accept your contention that the town is required to accept it because statute can't require that because it takes a vote at town meeting. So there is no obligation on the town's part to accept, there couldn't be. I mean, it gives you three options and you must convey to one of them, but that, that shall is for you, not the recipient. So, um, and I believe you've gone on to wanting homeowners, then, not the homeowners, but it's rental, so part of the operating agreement as part of that. Okay, so that part makes sense, but you definitely can't compel the town. Just wanted to be clear about that one. So, um, based on Brad's report, comment number five and the rest, why don't you, um, start off by explaining what actually could be done with this lot today? And why it's not only open space, which obviously it is, but that it meets one of the five, um, five criteria. Um, you know, which are historic preservation, education, outdoor education, recreation, park purposes, agriculture, horticulture, forestry, or visual amenity. So, um, take it away.
So, Tom Corbett with Go Baby Capital Group. Um, I'm here for White Pond Road, um, duplex development under the Flexible Development Plan for lot 5A1, lot 5A2, and lot 3A on the recently annar, um, approved annar from. So, we were here last time, I just wanted to kind of get a speak with you guys, so this, this project from another member of our team. I've been involved since the beginning and fifteen years ago, knowing history around White Pond and dragging it out there and everything else. Um, so I know the area very well, I know the neighborhood very well, I know people that live there very well. Um, from a sense of their community and their environment that they cherish down on White Pond. Um, and I just put this, obviously I put this letter together for you, just to kind of bring anything forward, so you guys understand where I'm coming from, just as far as what I see in front of us now. Um, necessarily thinking that it's been organized through the whole process, so I wanted to get that done so it can be productive. Um, so just a little bit about the open space key, those open space point, right? So the Flexible Development allows us to put uses in areas that, that may not be allowed. And because it's flexible, it's flexible for the area, then we can help, we just, more realistically, um, has the discretion to allow, disallow, and see what fits the neighborhood the best. And, um, when we first started looking at this property and the owner was saying that they wanted to move over with monetizing it, um, we looked, was that the time we were looking at the open space on another parcel that we own? So, we started looking at everything and kind of, I'm given input because I've been, I've had history period of time growing Sterling and worked in that area, but I had fifty thousand in that field and hundred things of the ten mile back there, so I know it very well. Uh, been walking the woods, been spending a lot of time there chasing moles to the woods. It ended up at JD Hump, that was mine.
I will, I'm right now.
I don't wanna get too much into that, but just the point being is that we take an approach with our development plans that we try to give to the community, keep things in the best state that they can with future development, right? Um, so when we started looking at this project and we got put simple payment homes, so very, it's a little longer than what's in the payment home, we can't do that. Um, and I did a little write-up of the history, we don't have to get into it all, community, but we do. Um, just as far as how it's shown now through time, um, nothing anybody on this board has ever really put forward, I don't believe. Um, but that just happened historically when it was a large parcel, um, solar developers, but it all, at the end, pretty difficult with development, but so I, um, no sense in condensing some excess land for solar development. So we have approached the order to purchase the property and, um, that is not, it reflects the operating, and we can go off course just a little bit, because I supplied you guys with an operating agreement to kind of cover how we wanna handle the project ourselves. And I think the best way for that, after discussing with you guys, talking to Brian numerous times about it, um, like you're saying, the town doesn't have a responsibility, the town could, if they'd like to take a vote, take on the property. Um, but I'm not really interested in trying to push that through and trying, I mean, I, I don't think it's gonna be very hard myself. Um, but at the same time, I'd like to do what I've got laid out here. So, our plan is to do duplexes on lot 5A1. Um, lot 5A2 will be remaining in the ownership, um, of either one, a trust and a setup, or just an individual owner itself, uh, with lot 3A. So ideally, we'll be going by conservation, using them on all, all those two lots, contrary to what I laid out here, because we had some conversation in the team. Um, so I think I laid out that we would keep lot 5A1 before the duplexes and lot 5A2. Um, always gonna ask for more, that's just what I think it's have to do. And I'll get to the data, get it all out, see what the town thinks and what people think. So, I've gotten the sense that I was really interested in it, in, in the property, the 3A and taking it and taking care of the land with it and being responsible for maintenance and things of that, understood. Um, so that's fine with us. So we've kind of flipped our mindset and we'd like to keep all the land in, in ownership, common ownership. Uh, or like I said, maybe that a trust owns it, however that needs to be facilitated. Um, but we belong, we're not looking to convey it to the town, uh, we're not looking to close referrals there. So, I want to make it kind of clear, we've already seen the solar field, right? I just drove down there ten minutes ago, because I love watching sunset by White Pond. And, you know, by the pond, it shines some pretty red colors off of the lily pads at the side of it. So, taking a ride by, seeing people walk their dogs in the farmer, moving stuff in this field and thinking to myself that it's just a terrible location for the allowances. And that's why, when I took this project over, I had a high interest in getting collective thoughts together so I could convey this to you. And I think it's pretty important to maintain the atmosphere down on White Pond. I think they take their neighborhood very seriously, um, we've seen that in many different scenarios in past years. And I think it's important to realize that keeping that chunk of 3A, we'll just say 3A for right now, and not even mentioning 5A2, right? So the 3A property is really what we're looking to maintain for the neighborhood. If we did something to 5A2, it's minimal and it does, the, the grade is like right at that point where you can't really, right? But when you get in between 5A2, 3A, and then, um, the large parcel that's associated with Sand and Ravel pit, they have, they have, or a sliver of land that comes over the front of the, on White Pond Road 2 that abuts the property in which that we are, are trying to purchase. So it's also a property that that developer could also purchase and make a nice wide road to go up and down White Pond Road direct, right?
That's MB Realty?
Uh, the large parcel being, um.
Well, the line's tied on the next one? Uh, well, it's either that or Rambo Dozy, which I think is right below that.
I'm just, there's another thing, there's another thin sort of property on here.
Yeah, it's just, it's a little thin thing coming in, and I think MB is the, is the owner in the back.
Yeah, so that's, yes, yes.
So they still have that access? Okay, I just wanted to make sure we're all talking about the same things.
Yep, understood. Uh, so yeah, I mean, I'm just, is that all right? Is that all right for you guys?
Yeah.
So, majority of this parcel in here is associated with many wetland features that have been developed over time since the development of Route 2 and the flats up above. Um, there's a couple wells in here through the Walmart develop, tried Walmart development back in the day. Um, when they were refuting this weapon back then. Um, I'll get into that.
Are any of those wells still active? Do they serve anything?
They do not serve anything.
Okay, so in that case, they don't really exist.
They're in existence, but yes, they're not, they're not utilized and.
Well, they don't really exist legally in the sense that they're totally not used. I don't know how much you have a well head protection.
So they, they are trying, you should, I'm not trying to get at anything, I'm just just letting you know.
No, but they are Asian wells?
I don't know facts about wells, I just know that they're there.
I think they're test wells, with when.
They were trying.
So before, before the golf.
They're not deep bedrock wells.
Before the golf center went in, Walmart was gonna go in up there.
Yep.
And so those were just test wells.
Okay.
So they physically exist, they're just not active.
Yeah.
Right, but as test wells, they have no legal consequence?
Yeah.
No, no well head protections on it?
No, but that's, no, not a, not a.
Well, as soon as you say well, figure it's important to clarify that there's no protections on it.
Existing conditions being that there are two test wells on site.
Oh, wow.
Perfect. Yep.
I can tell you.
Yep.
All right, so lot 3A is entrance right here with the sliver, and that comes in here. This is part of a floodpointing district that was.
Could you just, I, I think we have at least one person on the line, could you just point out where, like, if someone's looking at this, where, uh, Route 2 is, Union Turnpike?
Sure, absolutely.
So that way it will level set for people?
Definitely.
Because it, it, it is kind of confusing when you think of White Pond, the beginning of it's Lannister.
Right.
And then you get back into Lancaster, so you have to go Lancaster, out of Lancaster, back into Lancaster. So please.
Absolutely, so White Pond Road comes in from Old Union Turnpike over here to the west. Uh, so at the, right prior to Goat Farm and the overpass on 190, um, you take the left there. And White Pond itself is right here, right, just beyond Goat Farms, uh, fields there, and it's tilled up and gritty. Um, that wraps around, um, down to the bottom where the White Pond really opens up, there's some, that's where the water naturally flows into the pond where we have seen issues in the past through development. Um, so we, um, just, I'm sorry, I'm trying to stand, trying to hear a ask, but, um.
Yeah, you do right.
So it opens up here, and then pretty much right where it opens up and where the water crosses, it's relatively right there, right? That entrance into 3A, 5A2 is just before that, that abuts it.
And then goes that when we get into the private section, right?
Correct, so the private section, that last order, no more houses on White Pond Road, that is just beyond the entrance to this site.
Okay, thank you.
So, you can come up in here, right around where the water goes across. Um, so wetlands are a pretty significant source here, so there's a lot of protected land currently under the Act. Um, and we had gone through some paperwork with the solar and working with Hannity over the years. Um, they had gone through a process to establish the flood zone, uh, because there was some disagreement upon where that sat at the time based upon elevations and logic. And that was gone through, and this red line represents where that hundred foot, the hundred foot, um, hundred year uh, flood buffer is out here. So that's a hundred foot buffer, right? This is the zone itself.
And can you just show on that, when there was all that overflow going into White Pond, did it first go into those big wetlands and then the little ones and then across the road? Can you just sort of show with your finger approximately where all that runoff went?
Yeah, absolutely, let me do my best to. Let me go. So, here we've got the hillside.
Mm-hmm.
And here we've got the lower, or, sorry. So we've got the hillside, the bottom side of the hillside, uh, array, right? So, our entryway is here to our site development of two duplexes.
And that's also the access way to get to the back of the solar field.
It is a back access, correct, and it, the access is, majority of that purpose is for national grid, that's what the interconnection equipment is for that site, um, for one of them, for the hillside anyway. And from here, if you walk back, um, hmm, what, from the road, it's probably 200 feet, I bet, to just about where the fence is, which has currently been filled with a bunch of illegal dumping, if I may find out. Um, but that's for later. And, uh, we, uh, the fire department brought that up to me. I went over and looked, there's a bunch of bottoms there, and we contacted the solar owner and that swallows the fire department, but.
At, at least it's not.
I won't go too hard.
At least it's not drums filled with unidentified liquid.
Correct, yeah, it's actually got clean stuff, which was nice to see, right? Especially being here.
But, so does, yeah, does that floodwater go into the big wetlands and then cross to the little wetlands on 5A2 and then across the road?
Uh, floodwater being?
Well, you know, when you had all that extra runoff off the solar field, and it was flooding into White Pond, where was that happening? Where was it crossing White Pond Road? That's what I'm not clear on.
Where it was crossing, where the drainage comes out of it, I don't know if it's really shown.
If it's not, if it's not on there, it's not on there. I just wanted to see if it's connected to those big wetlands on lot 3.
Absolutely it is. That's, yes, absolutely.
So those.
I would think hydraulic, that's coming from the manmade wetland up by the corner of the road, I mean, Old Union. And it drains in between the two sites here.
Yep.
And somewhere in here, there are old drains, clay drains, which is an issue, which is.
The reason why there was so much tragedy and, uh, controversy around that, right?
That was a interesting time, and, uh, nobody could have seen that coming, right? You know, but knowing that there's historical drains there, we wanted to lay here and try and make some good development happen. So we wanna leave this space open, we don't wanna disturb anything, we're not interested in creating any more detriment to White Pond. It's already filled with lily pads, it's a shallow pond, it's a lot of silt, it doesn't really drain, it doesn't breathe well. Um, so keeping natural air and water and clean water and getting into there is of high importance to me. Um, as a, kind of the steer of the ship when it comes to development here. Um, so with the flood zone, it extends. So the double red line, inside red line is way up here, right? So that's the flood zone.
Okay.
Now I can apply to D E P and I can go through all the processes and get my road in, right? So, allowing by right is a big, is a big subject matter when it comes to defending the, defending the citizens of White Pond Road, right? Because I'm, that's what I'm here to do. I'm here to do positive development before somebody does something else. So, my ideas here were to condense our project down to a small lot that's high in drive, almost a hun, actually I think it is a hundred percent drive. And.
That's 5A.
That's 5A.
5A1, sorry.
Correct, 5A1.
5A2 has all the levels.
Correct, still could be buildable for a house lot if it was owned properly, but it's not, right? So, looking through bylaws, depending on what we do, right, trying to chase down iPod overlays, like, there's all kinds of stuff involved with that that also requires a commercial use. Uh, so there was nothing that came out to us that we were comfortable with because, again, it's higher in the backside of 3A, right? So this is all low, this is, that's why all the wetlands, or the water drains towards there, right?
So that, that's where it came across then?
It goes under the road.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
That is, oh.
Yep, and it comes into White Pond right here.
Mm-hmm.
So just west, probably, oh, how much farther do we have here? The seven numbers.
Thirty-five, thirty-five, I think.
All right, so we'll call, we'll call that sixty feet from the entrance, um, it's probably fifty, right? It goes across the road, so in front of 5A2. So 5A2, we, we, we wanna preserve this well. We don't want to be dumping gutter drains into the wetlands and causing top soils that are nearby and fragile to be spilling in phosphates to the pond. Uh, so with this development, we went around the block with the iPod overlay, we were sticking buildings up here, which we could theoretically get building up here, we could put a big building right over here. We can get a roadway in here with the proper permits and the proper measures put in place. So, we were interested in moving fast early on, and we were kind of aggressively looking at that. And the more I started getting involved with the project, that this is not gonna fly, right? And I don't wanna try and go in front of you guys and in front of people of White Pond Road and try and put something in the neighborhood that doesn't fit. So, looking through the Flexible Development, it looked like a great idea. It gives us, it gives us as an applicant the ability to be creative, um, as well as try and fit the neighborhood and save costs on construction and curb cuts and just overall disturbance, right? So we have condensed the site down to just the 5A1 lot, having the two duplexes on it with the shared driveway, shared well, and a shared septic system. Um, I can go through, well, I'll just touch on that. The well, the well's under the size for a public well, so we've been through the motions there. Um, electricity is all kind of in the same line, so it's one trench for electricity, one trench for sewer line, one trench for a water line, and not four, or three, or a jacket seven inch or eight inch main coming in for a fire suppression system that doesn't, that's what it's gonna do, so I've got a White Pond.
So, let me, let me just briefly interrupt. I think all the stuff you've done has been great, I think you've done a lot of homework. From our perspective, when I read the bylaw, we need some evidence of that second use of the open space.
I'm getting there.
Because, you know, no, but I mean, I am, if you have actual, physical, like, photographs or something.
Where does it say that?
We're allowed to ask for stuff, so we're just like, like, show us.
So my question to you would be, what doesn't make it a visual amenity? What do you define a visual amenity as?
Well, there's the right.
Because that's for interpretation as well, which gives you a nice discretion as a board to do right by your citizens, right?
Yep, yep. So, so let me be clear, my initial thought isn't like, I'm gonna reject this, it's right.
I'm just trying to present the project.
Yeah, no, no, you're, you're just.
Just let me, just let me, it's okay, it's okay. So, we've got two duplexes on 5A2, and then the rest of this is all gonna be kept in our ownership or a trust, like I said, some kind of mechanism that can afford the maintenance obligations involved with protecting the resources that are on site, right? So, we have a bunch of dead wood fall, we're not gonna just leave it there, we might take some of it and leave some of it, depending on what kind of habitat's happening, right? Um, we're gonna make sure that there's no crazy diseases going on with trees over time, just normal things people do with their properties when they own them. Um, so that will all be part of this development and part of the Flexible Development Plan. And when we start talking about, when we start talking about the amenity or whatever else used, right? Recreation, we wanna do what, teaching, things like that, without looking at it directly. Um, recreation for one, um, fits the bill there, right? So you get four families moving in, you get little kids maybe playing down in the frog pond, learning what tadpoles are, right? And watching them grow and go through the culvert pipe and end up on the other side and the fish eat them.
The kids or the frogs?
Either one.
Okay.
Well, you said the culvert was big, so it's really not gonna be able to get through.
But recreation's a big piece, um, for the whole neighborhood really, right? So I see people going up and down the road, I saw three people walking their dog, one lady with two guys. And if you're familiar with the road, it's, if you're going ten, you feel like you're going fast, right? It's like, you grow with those trees on the side of the road, might think you mirror on or mailbox, um.
Definitely mailbox.
Yeah, I'm thinking about that three up front, but, yeah.
You watch for the diamond plate mailboxes, those are the ones that bite back.
Yeah, fill the concrete.
This, by the way, by adding 5A2, it really makes the open space a lot more desirable.
For sure.
Because previously, it's like, oh, you can get in this little area and then you have to walk through swamps.
Yeah, and now you could, you know, you're in a position to put in a trail or something.
Correct. It definitely makes it more, more desirable.
Well, it's more conservation, it's more conservation appeal with the, with the other two lots being kept in their natural form. I think that's a big step on your part, doing that.
I have a question about those lots, so what I'm hearing, and maybe I'm hearing wrong, it's those lots that were calling conservation or the open line are not being turned over to the town. So in theory, they're private property.
They will be, and it, it's the pleasure, because honestly, we're open, we're flexible by all senses.
I'm, I'm just bringing that up, it's, and we just had a recent discussion about private property, so they're private property.
Yeah, I think he said initially that they didn't wanna push it up.
Right.
So that was, um, appealing either way, and I think any good property owner isn't gonna let their property, you know.
Just no four wheelers and dirt bikes, please.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's one of those things too. You still can allow people to use your property, but it has to be respected in, in that form.
And if it's posted, I mean, you guys kind of posted no trespassing?
Uh, we have.
Or we're just not there yet?
Yeah, I'm not there yet, right? I wanna get, I wanna feel you guys, I don't wanna, if, if the right thing to do for your town is to convey it to the town, I mean, go through the process, I will talk to the people I need to talk to and get the neighborhood on board with that, but.
Let's, let's just sort of, I don't think that's as critical for your development, what you wanna do, your goal is to get a building permit.
Right, right.
As expeditiously as possible.
Right.
So you don't necessarily have to settle some of those issues before you get your building ready.
Right, I'd like to have everything done before.
I know, but in terms of like, it's going to the town, we're gonna own it on our own, you have a mechanism to own it on your own. If the town, if the Concom comes through and says, oh, now we look at it all and it's got 5A2, which is ten and four, maybe ways the Concom wanna take it on.
Yep.
Fantastic, that really isn't the subject of, of this or, or that.
Totally.
Um, so, we'll, yeah.
We can leave that. I think, I think it's a very interesting parcel, right? I mean, we already know what goes on up here and potential harm that could be done if things will mix up, right? And who knows, maybe the water. And who knows, maybe the water or the backs up engines, I don't know, um. Anything could tap on the ground. So when we were looking at this, we're like, alright, so we're down here, we're gonna call it a hole because realistically. If you're looking from White Pond, White, the pond is in the back and looking at the property. You can see the contour, right? So three A goes up to the right and meets up over by Madigan's, which is higher, right? It's probably twenty feet higher without looking at the grids. And then it's got that hole where all this water comes down through and we do these into the White Pond. And then it starts going up again over here. And then you get the hillside that goes very far up. So from here, if you stand right here, if you're in this guy's backyard or if you're in this person's house trying to enjoy the dead end of the pond. You turn around, you're looking at solar panels now.
So you validated that you can stand there and see it?
I just drove by and I can see the solar panels from my car.
Okay, great.
And even kind of seeing through just even the driveway for the duplexes, but obviously we have an interest in. Making our residents of the duplexes comfortable. So we'll be working through what that looks like once it's kind of. Cleared, I guess, and we can come up with a landscape plan, anything that works out as ours as far as that goes, but. Cause I do, I don't, what I don't want is to clear cut five A one, have two houses on it, disrupt a bunch of dirt for, for all of the pipes and have a. A visual detriment to the neighborhood, right? So most likely it's gonna end up being like an arbor by any situation tall, pretty giants or whatever it might be. Uh on the backside of the houses. One, to kind of screen the solar field, so if there are kids, they're not really like, yeah, I'm gonna go try and climb that fence, like, it's kind of like the board, right? So that's kind of our goal here is to preserve the essence of White Pond Road. It's beautiful down there. Someone's just said, and I had a hard time turning around and come back here. I live on a pond in Sterling. I know all about how peaceful it is when it's quiet and industrial uses and commercial uses just don't fit the neighborhood. It was never intended for that to fit the neighborhood. That intention and that intent was never there. Uh the intent was to create a zoning district. That met bound lines, so they followed boundary lines and parcels back then. And it engulfed everything up to, well, Route seventy and still does. Um and then introduced the E Z A, things of that nature, uh for a little bit higher trafficked uh uses. So if we were to come in front of you and not wanna talk and discuss how we can better your town and, and keep it the way that it is. I could come in here with a site plan and.
I'm happy with what you've done as it, as it is. You, you don't necessarily need to do that part of it.
Yeah, I would never, I would never.
No, 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 but I am, with five A two, I had a lot of concern about lot three and whether it met the bylaw as it was configured. When you throw in five A two, the way you've done it, there's a lot more frontage, there's a lot more accessible land. You can at that point make a better case for visual amenity or recreational use. So at that point, I personally. And, and I can't speak for the rest of the board. But I'm, I'm happy calling the lot five three, whatever you wanna call it, the big lot. Yeah, I'm happy with that as open space in terms of your flex development. I, I, I didn't like it before, I'll be completely honest, but I think at this point.
Was that because of the calculation?
No, it wasn't a calculation. I'm just looking at this and going, you can't get to any of this stuff and all the stuff way up in this arm is all steep slopes, stuff to walk on. So I was just looking, it's like going, I'm not, I'm just not totally getting the benefit. But once you throw in five A two. There is a lot, it just seems to me there's a lot more, more benefit there. I think, you know, you guys can talk about trails and stuff like that. Um I mean, cause the flex development is pretty clear. We're giving as a developer an extra benefit in exchange for an extra benefit for the town.
Right.
So this is a better benefit, um you know, and you can talk, we can talk about, you know, how it should be maintained and trails and that kind of stuff, but. Um I at least personally am happy with that lot as an open space lot, which I think was a big hurdle. What did the rest of you think? Did the rest of you like this as an open space lot?
Yeah, I like the setup. I think um it shouldn't be a compromise to be able to develop and give. The town the other property or transfer over to conservation. That to me isn't an option for any. Landowner to have to do because it's, doesn't make sense to me. I think you propose what you propose, keeping your property. And doing what you're gonna do with the property, maintaining it, putting it in a trust, however, that makes perfect sense to me.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm not, what, what I saw as objections, I'm not seeing the same way now you've rejiggered it. So.
I've reexplained, right?
Well, reexplaining helps too, but also.
But so the, all the intent's still there and all the ideologies are still there, so. It's just really you're starting to think about the community a little bit more than the letters that are defined.
Honestly, I'm looking at five A two and upwind on three and going, if I exclude all the rest of lot three, don't consider it at all. Does that still look like a reasonable flex development option? Just that one little section at the upper. And looking at that, and that's how I'm looking at it, I can say, yes, I do see that. You know, and then all the rest of this is, you know, honestly undevelopable land in most cases anyway.
Yeah.
So that's, you know, part of my concern is like, why are we giving this guy credit for open spaces? It's virtually impossible to build on anyways, which is fact or.
For the bump. You're referring to the bump. They had it? Do you have a bump?
No, 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 I'm just referring to the, there's a lot of sections on lot three that looks like either it's steep slopes or you can't get to them. You know, that kind of stuff. So.
Oh, you can get up there, no problem.
But, but the issue is, is that if you were to, if you were to basically, there's sort of that bump that goes into the wetlands. You know, if you're looking along your southern lot line, it's where it says upland area and existing lot lines to be removed.
Yes.
You know, so if you sort of include all of that and you just say that just coming up to the wetlands. Is the open space you're providing under a flex development bylaw. I think just by, just by looking at it, that that would give you the open space requirements that you need to do what you want. And at which point all the wetlands, which, you know, aren't rebuildable anyway, are an extra bumps.
There's plenty of them, though. That's, that's what I don't wanna get into.
No, 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 but I'm just going to be, and it's, I'm, I'm just saying, you, you should go with it because.
Thanks, Arnie. Thanks, happy role within. Yeah.
I agree.
I, I, I think you're, what I'm looking at as well is that when we get out there and justify a flex development, which is a lift for us. We all need to be able to say, here's what we got from the town and here's why it matters.
And for that reason, I think, I think, you know, Frank was on the button when he said some photographs would really help. Because when, when it's our turn to document the improvement in the amenity or its recreation or whatever.
I request the board to come do a site walk then. Cause I don't think pictures do it justice.
Promises, and he promises no ticks and no mosquitoes.
No, sir, but I can bring some off.
Um how about we take a site walk after the first cross?
Like, oh, there is.
Much too far about.
Yeah, yeah, off doesn't, off doesn't work for snakes.
I don't think snakes, like even in a little bit.
No, no, there's, like I said, there's, I'm, this is high and dry, most of this. This, this trough is wet, so.
I have a suggestion.
Yeah, we couldn't do it.
Could you, do the iPhone?
At least we can say that's good.
Take your phone, go for a walk, make a video, send it to Brian.
For me?
Yes.
I've done a lot of legwork here and I think that it is, so if you guys want me to be here, it's easy. They're gonna have to see it with your allies.
Okay.
Because.
And to quite frankly, I would love to.
Probably, we can do that, I just don't know when we can schedule it.
Yeah.
Sure. So, but.
I have no requirement to see it. I trust your work.
Yeah, so I, I, I.
I mean, I've driven down there several times. I just don't step on the property because it's private property, but.
No, I hear you.
And I welcome you guys.
And like to. No, I, I would love to.
I mean, so I don't think, I don't think there's a requirement for me to show you what it looks like if you guys think otherwise, then.
Well, we've gotten, we've gotten to the point now where, you know, we're like, okay, we accept your arguments. It would be great to have some documentation. The next time you're down there looking at the sunset, if you wanna take a couple of pictures.
Yes.
You know, that, that sort of thing would be, I mean, just.
We're not asking a big lift.
Look, when the next developer comes in and says, when Tom Corbett rolled over you guys, you gotta do it for us. We're like, no, 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 we got this stuff. We got evidence, you know, we're. This is important.
This is a public hearing, right?
Yes.
We have two people from the public who have sat in. Um Tom, Roy, do you have any comments or just wanna keep listening?
I'm not, I'm not seeing any hands up, Regina. I go, if someone puts their hand up over all of us.
I know, being nice, I'm nice, I know, nice. It's rare for me to be nice, but.
Oh, okay, so later.
Okay.
It's obvious.
Okay.
Um so in essence, we're trying to do the right thing here for the neighborhood. We think that this fits the bill. I'm happy to hear the, that the thoughts on the board are around the same as mine. And I think that we can all agree that this is a special piece of the town. And that a visual amenity can be defined in many different ways. And a visual amenity to me is keeping the aesthetics of the neighborhood intact and separated from higher usage. That's only gonna get more developed, right? We've got open soccer fields that don't have to stay soccer fields. We've got solar fields.
We're accepting your argument.
I know, I'm, I'm not trying, I'm just pleading for the citizens of White Pond.
You won already. Yeah, no, 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 we're, we're, I think at this point, everybody in the board agrees, that's valid open space. So at that point, the plans and calculations are correct. I don't think we need to take a vote right now.
No.
But um, you know, I think if Ross and the board heard.
I'm glad.
And thank you.
And I think, I think Tom, I think you did a really good job with this.
Thank you very much. I tried to do the right thing in most of these developments. Sometimes it's tricky, right? But this one's a no-brainer, to me anyway. And uh I needed you guys to hear that.
No, we continue the fashion.
It's, no, and, and sorry, sorry to be like, hey, you know, it's time, it's, it's Labor Day week. It's like, you're good.
No reason. So, I appreciate the efforts you all put in and the questions you asked, cause that's what I would want from my town representatives.
And I appreciate the work that you have done on this as well and, you know, in terms of explaining calculations and everything else. So um work with Brian on the next steps and how to be able to get this wrapped up.
Yeah, we'll get some documentation together as far as that open space, how that's gonna work, we've been, stuff like that, over you through those requirements and. Get that all drafted up and I'll get you some pictures. I'll take the sun to you.
Just one thing, the driveway is still.
September ninth or twenty-third?
Is that it?
Twenty-sixth.
The next meeting is the ninth.
Next meeting is the ninth, the meeting after that's the twenty-third, so I'm gonna recommend the twenty-third.
Four, two, twenty-three, that's three realists.
Yeah.
Okay, great. So I'm, I'm gonna be expeditious and you just requested a continuance, I'm going to ask for a motion.
Sure.
Motion.
Do we need to keep the hearing open?
Yeah.
Do we close the hearing?
No.
Uh yeah, so we're gonna introduce new documentation. I think you should, you should probably.
Oh, yeah, I, I always wanna keep it open until we're a hundred percent sure. It's, it's just more difficult that way. So.
Can I, one.
Open. Mike, bro. Second. Okay, any discussion on continuing until the second meeting in September? Hey, it's called for a vote. Mike, it's Kendra, Regina, George, Frank, yes.
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 Appreciate you guys listening to me.
Excellent, excellent job, always.
I'll make a, I'll make a break before the meeting. Anytime you want. Anytime you want, I'll make myself available. Um just one thing, are you guys gonna get to September twenty-third and wanna see a draft decision is my question?
Yeah. Okay.
Draft decisions never hurt. So sort of we be like actively working towards that, Brian and I? Of some sort.
After waiver day, after waiver day, a draft decision.
I don't see, I don't see why I should be drugged.
And after waiver day, I would agree, I would agree. That's fine.
I'm gonna get you over to this line by the end of September. Let's just put it that way. I want to have you over to this line by the end of September.
We're meeting this seven years, Tom. Yeah.
I'd like to have you over to this line by the end of September.
Yeah, I just wanna have a clear course, you know?
No, that's, there, there's your course. And if for some reason it doesn't happen at that meeting, we ought to be able to do it the first meeting in October and stop going. You know, I don't know when you guys are thinking about starting construction.
Not really. This, this is sensitive.
Yeah, okay. So, so we're, we have a little bit of flexibility time-wise then to make sure the eyes are all dotted. If you're not sitting there going, no, I'm really trying to get in here. I wanna break ground before Veterans Day or whatever it is, so.
For sure, yeah, no, no danger on that, so just wanna uh have a break after my.
Well, now you got it.
I appreciate that.
Pleasure. Uh we got three quick public meetings here, so five eighty-four Pond Road wants a special permit extension. Um this seems to be, to me, to be very reasonable, given the other things that delayed them.
Thank you.
Um does anyone have any negative comments about extensions?
None.
Okay, uh in that case, um so what are we giving, what do they want, Brian? Another year?
Just like extended for the next two year. I think they reported, they're gonna ask me for it.
It just says extended two years. It says extended two years.
Yeah, it's like planned for for another two years till October twenty twenty-sixth.
Okay, great. You're gonna take so move.
So move.
Thank you.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, I'll call for a vote and extending the five eighty-four Pond Road special permit for two years. Regina, George.
Yes.
Yes.
Kendra.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Frank, yes. Okay, all done. Uh master plan, we've seen uh the new master plan draft around. I think that things are, you know, things are done. So unless anyone has any specific stuff they wanna discuss about it, I just look for a motion to adopt it.
Yeah, I do.
Okay, so we got a motion to adopt during the second.
Second.
Any discussion? I'd just like to thank everybody who worked on it. Tons of people worked on it and we're all better off for it. So I'll call for a vote. Regina.
Yes.
George.
Yes.
Kendra.
Yeah.
Mike.
Yes.
Frank, yes. So five O to adopt the master plan, yay. So the wayfaring signage program, so we've seen the design.
What were we going into that? Could I just make an additional comment on the, on the master plan? Sure, I think reading through that thing again uh last week. It just drove home to me the, the essential nature of the economic development committee. You know, we proposed to change the tax base of the town and yet, you know. We don't really have a mechanism to showcase what properties are, are available. I think we should do that, or I think that's one of the um. The special duties that the E C should be assigned.
I do not disagree at all.
Okay.
I would pass a law on to do it.
Wayfinding.
We must start with that conversation with last meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um wayfinding.
Thank you.
There's, um yeah, very good to put that in the record. Um so what exactly, so we want simply to move to adopt the proposed sign and map even though there is no money for doing any of this right now?
Yes, it's, it's a, just a question of um. You know, adopting or accepting the design and the map uh so that then we can then use it to insert into grants. While we have writing grant, we're looking for funding, we have a, a report that's showing exactly not only what we want it to be and where we want it to be, but we have the hardware and, and, and construction. So it's all the scope of work is there uh for a uh funding application.
Can't say ignorant question. The wayfinding sign, so signs to say, hey, this is where this is, this is where that is. How does that, and, and again, this is ignorant, how does it fall under the planning board? Like, why is this in front of us?
Oh, because the, the, the last planning director wrote the grant and it is a community development. It's in the planning, it's in, yeah, it's, it's not in the bylaw that says this is the planning board's purview, but it's just part of the.
No, I.
Development thing, that the select board, uh when we got the grant, it said, you know, who wants to do this, select board, I don't know. Vote by this select board, but the administrator said, planning board, take this on, Brian, take this on. And I might basically just work, cause I don't wanna do anything in isolation. I want to bring you guys.
No, no, and, and that's great. No, I, that, it was just a curious.
Yeah, no, that's, that's, yeah. Great. Um so at that point, I think we need a motion to adopt the proposal or the map and that's. We're good, definitely.
Welcome.
Second. Further discussion?
I can't secondly on both here.
No, he's seconded. He's seconded. You guys are trying to, it's good.
I guess.
Okay, I'm not hearing any further discussion, so.
Yes.
Vote on the motion, yes. Regina.
Yes.
George.
Yes.
Yeah.
Kendra.
Yeah.
Okay, it's that one of those.
Okay, Kendra votes yes, Frank also yes. Um so it's done. Um at this point, Brian's postponing his reports. We can get out of here, so I look for a motion to adjourn.
A motion. I'll do that one.
Kendra, any discussion? No, I mean, we're done. Uh any discussion?
No.
Hearing none, call for a vote. Mike.
Yes.
Kendra.
Yes.
Regina.
Yes.
George.
Yes.
Frank, yes, we're done.